Board meeting here at Emerson Elementary School. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Wagner?
Here.
Ms. Edison?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Ms. Kullivitz?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Rutledge, will you lead us in the pledge? All right, it's time for communication with our host school, Dr. Schuler. Could you introduce Ms. Katie De La Rosa?
Gotcha.
Thank you.
So it's my pleasure to introduce Principal of Emerson Elementary School, Mrs. De La Rosa, who's going to give us a welcome. And she's got a big contingent with her, I think, to help welcome us to Emerson. So, this is De La Rosa.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening and welcome to Emerson. My name is Katie De La Rosa and I have the honor of serving as Principal of Emerson Elementary School. With it being the month of November, we've been talking a lot about gratitude and how important it is to reflect on the people, places, things, and experiences that enrich our lives. I have invited some very brave students to give you a glimpse of Emerson and all the reasons we are grateful for this incredible school and its community.
Hello, my name is Isabella and I'm in 3rd grade.
My name is Axel and I'm in kindergarten.
At Emerson, we soar together. Each month, we gather as an entire school community to review our soar expectations, celebrate birthdays, and honor our Student of the Month.
Our soar assemblies give us a chance to celebrate our amazing school community.
My name is Simon and I'm in 5th grade.
My name is Roland and I'm in kindergarten.
We are also thankful for our Emerson families, which is something new we started this year. Every student at Emerson is part of an Emerson family made up of students in each grade level.
We meet once a month to learn, ah, God, messed up. We meet once a month to learn about each other and the ways we can make Emerson a better place.
This month, we created a gratitude tree made up of all the things we are thankful for. Make sure to check it out on your way out today.
My name is Nate and I'm in 1st grade.
And my name is Greta and I'm in 4th grade. We are so grateful for play club. After our parents participated in the book study of The Anxious Generation, the Engage Emerson Committee started a play club, which takes place after school every other week.
It gives kids an opportunity to play with kids of all different ages and meet new friends.
My name's Adeline and I'm in 4th grade.
My name's Rowan and I'm in 1st grade.
We are also thankful for our recess buddies program.
This year, we have over 50 4th and 5th grade recess buddies who are assigned one day a week at kindergarten and 1st grade recess.
It's a really neat opportunity to play games and be a role model for our youngest students.
My name is Maren and I'm in 3rd grade.
My name is Eliza and I'm in 1st grade.
Running Club is another favorite. Mr. Lorch is in charge of Running Club. We meet on Wednesday and Friday mornings on the field.
We run monster laps and mark down each lap we complete. It's a time where we can exercise cycles and encourage each other to keep going.
My name is Jackson and I'm in 5th grade. Another highlight is the Turkey Bowl. Last year was our first students, first teachers Turkey Bowl. It was so much fun watching the 5th graders play against the teachers last year. I can't wait to participate. Students are hoping for a W this year.
My name is Kayden and I'm in 2nd grade.
My name is Sam and I'm in 2nd grade too.
Most of all, we are grateful for is our amazing teachers. They inspire us, challenge us, and help us grow every single day.
Our teachers work really hard to help us each day and never give up.
My name is Jason and I'm in 5th grade.
And my name is Brennan and I'm in 2nd grade.
We hope this gave you a glimpse of why Emerson is such a special place.
Have a wonderful night and a happy Thanksgiving.
Good job. As, thank you, students, you did amazing. As you can see, Emerson is a very special place and it would not be possible without a supportive Board of Education. So if you are a board member, can you please raise your hand? We, we have a little treat as a small token of our appreciation for all that you do. Thank you very much. All right, Jason, you can go stand if you're prepared. Amazing, okay. You gotta raise your hand.
Oh, raise my hand.
And Julie, you gotta raise your hand.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I don't know who bigger smiles, the audience or the teacher standing in the back. Thank you. Board members, are there any modifications to the agenda tonight? All right, recognitions and achievements. Dr. Schuler, could you introduce those being recognized?
Absolutely. We have two recognitions this evening, and I'm going to actually first introduce Mrs. Lori Campos, who's Principal at Wheaton-Warrenville South, who's going to do our first student recognition. I'm not going to step on Lori's thunder in making this introduction, but as I shared coming in, I've seen students that have performed amazingly at the state level. I've never seen a level of dominance like I saw in the girls' tennis tournament this year. And so, Mrs. Campos, I'm going to let you tell us a little bit about that recognition.
Thank you. I'm going to first ask Reese and Riley to come up next to me here. And I do think dominance is an understatement for these young ladies. These are probably two of the most talented athletes I've seen come through Wheaton-Warrenville South High School. And Reese is only a sophomore. So she, and I've got to see Riley play for all of her last three years. And so, I've got the pleasure of watching both of these girls. They just became doubles this year, and it is like a special bond that they have on the court. They went undefeated their entire season. And I did, I did want to get the numbers, but I didn't get, they did not lose one single match their entire season. So, and it's a very small number of games. Did you look, did you look up? Just games. So they, they walked through the state championship. And if you watch these girls, their athleticism is unmatched. And I guess to me, even more than that, they are amazing young ladies that I think speaks volumes to their parents right here behind us, their amazing teammates in addition to that. They, they are graceful on the court and, and off the court. And I think, you know, you can be that good and not be as amazing character as they have. And so I just want to congratulate them on their entire season. I look forward to next year, so.
I did want to just recognize their coach is also here. Oh, she's hiding over there. You moved. But if you've been around Wheaton at all, you probably have met Patty and she just has
an incredible program. Their teammate, their camaraderie, the culture that she builds is incredible. So I seen her hiding over there, but I did want to recognize her as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Campos, and congratulations. We have one more recognition this evening, and I'm going to actually ask Mrs. De La Rosa to come back up to the podium. So I think as the board knows, we started a tradition about a year ago of recognizing a community partner, an amazing community partner at each of our meetings. And I always give our building principal an opportunity to, to think about who they may want to recognize that's been especially impactful. And as I had that first conversation with Katie, and she told me the story of Vanessa, I said, "That is a perfect community partner recognition." So, Mrs. De La Rosa.
Tonight, we are proud to recognize Vanessa O'Brien for her incredible dedication to the Emerson community. For more than 20 years, Vanessa has been a constant presence at Emerson, first as an involved parent and continuing to support our school long after her own children moved on. She is always ready to lend a helping hand wherever she's needed. From regularly serving as a lunch and recess supervisor, to supporting our youngest learners at Camp Kinder, to stepping in as a long-term substitute teacher, Vanessa does it all with a smile and a genuine love for our school. Students and staff are drawn to Vanessa's kindness and warmth, and she has a natural gift for building strong relationships with everyone around her. One thing is certain, Vanessa's heart is at Emerson, and we are so grateful for the care and commitment that she brings to our community every single day.
So I have a preamble to read here. "Thank you for taking time to share your feedback and thoughtful focus on our students, school district, and community. It is the board's practice to not directly discuss communication from the community until the context is understood and the information is explored. It's not our intention to signal a lack of interest, and we appreciate your understanding. Depending on the number of people signed up to speak during public comment, Board Policy 2.230 enables the time per speaker to be reduced from 3 to 2 minutes, allowing more people to share their perspectives. Tonight, we will not have to reduce that time for each speaker. To maintain confidentiality, the board asks that any matters concerning personnel or students be communicated to the board privately. When we meet, it's important that we all treat each other with kindness and respect. We set an example for our schools and desire to honor that by being courteous in our public comments. Let's work together to lead with positive intent so that our democratic process reflects the best of our community. To help us follow up if needed, please include your name and if you're a resident of the district. To ensure everyone has a chance to speak, Ms. Kullivitz will raise her hand when 15 seconds remains as a reminder to wrap up your thoughts. At the end of our agreed time, I will respectfully ask you to allow the next speaker to begin. Thank you for investing time to attend the board meeting tonight and share your thoughts and encouragement with our district." With that, our first speaker tonight, our first public comment tonight, sorry, is Amanda Dudgeon. Did I get that right, Amanda?
My name is Amanda Dudgeon. I'm a proud member of the WWEA and a 1st grade teacher at Emerson Elementary School. I would like to begin by expressing my gratitude to the Board of Education and their dedication to our district's mission, to inspire, educate, challenge, and support all students in achieving their highest levels of learning and personal development. I would also like to take this opportunity to share how the generous efforts of the Emerson community contribute to that goal. At Emerson, we are dedicated to collaboration, communication, and connection. As a result, it is common for our staff to go above and beyond the typical call to support student success. This past summer, one Emerson teacher created several relationship-building opportunities for a student with a history of school refusal. The teacher, in partnership with the family, invited the student to the classroom to play games, read books, and assist with the general back-to-school setup. These meetups helped ease the student's transition when the school year officially began. The student is now making steady academic and functional progress and was recently selected to be October Student of the Month. When a student struggled with academic performance, another Emerson teacher utilized the student's love for drama and musical theater to boost his confidence. The teacher curated opportunities for the student to sing and act out his favorite scenes for the class. By allowing the student to showcase his personal talents and interests, the teacher reinforced his abilities and worth. The student's passion has also inspired other students to participate in local theater. We are eager to give a standing ovation to the handful of Emerson students performing in Wheaton Park District's production of The Lion King next week. Beyond these encouragements, Emerson staff also eat lunch with students on their birthdays. They donate their prep time to co-teach phonics groups, they prepare meal trains, purchase snow gear, and attend extracurricular activities, and so much more. As a result of our care and concern, Emerson students have a deep sense of value and belonging. Emerson families also contribute to our school's intentions. They consistently dedicate their time and resources to benefit students and our neighborhood community. When our school grounds were overgrown and lackluster during the summer months, a group of families took initiative and adopted plots. With their students in tow, the families spent time weeding and re-beautifying the area. Most notably, two Emerson parents organized a food pantry for families impacted by the recent lapse in SNAP benefits. In its first week, the Emerson food pantry benefited 17 families. We continue to receive donations and plan for weekly shopping events. The impact has been overwhelmingly positive. At its core, Emerson is a little school with a big heart. Though we have diverse joys and concerns, we are a family that trusts our expertise and our shared values. I am proud to be a part of the work we do to support students, families, and our District 200 community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tara Ann Robertson.
Hello. Hello, my name is Tara Ann, and I'm a proud parent of a wonderful boy, sorry, it gets me a little choked up, who recently joined this district. My son was diagnosed with autism, and like most parents with a child with special needs, his father and I both had hopes and worries. We hoped that he would find a place of belonging and worried that he would adjust to a new environment. From the very beginning, this school has taught us so many things. Each teacher, staff, and students didn't just welcome my son, but embraced him. They saw his strengths, his personality, and his potential. They took time to understand his needs and created a space where he could not only thrive, but learn. Each day, I see the difference this school has made. My son comes home smiling, he's excited to share what he's learned or who he's played with. Those moments may seem very small, but to a parent like myself or his father, they mean the world. It's not just a result of this community, but the leadership that it has possessed, the passion, the dedication, and the patience. This school has not just become a place of education, but a place of belonging, acceptance, love, and growth. It has given my son confidence, comfort, and the sense of belonging that every child deserves. On behalf of my family, I just want to sincerely thank each one of the teachers, aides, administration, Board of Educations, and students who have played a part in this journey. Your kindness has made a lasting impression in their lives, and I'm truly grateful to be a part of this great community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tom Aiello.
I'm Tom Aiello, a proud U.S. Army veteran and a Wheaton resident for more than 20 years. I'm back tonight because when I believe in something, I stand behind it. Last month, I spoke about the importance of making sure the American flag remains the most prominent flag in our classrooms. Not to diminish anything or anyone, but to remind us, all of us, and especially our students, of what unites us. Yesterday, I had the honor of speaking to more than 450 7th and 8th grade students at Hubble Middle School during their Veterans Day assembly. My message to them was simple. Thank you for your service is nice, but it isn't always enough. I shared one of my favorite quotes from President John Fitzgerald Kennedy. "As we express our gratitude, we must never forget that the highest appreciation is not to utter words, but to live by them." I told those students that every time they help somebody, they honor veterans, that they were willing to sacrifice, that we were willing to sacrifice everything for them. And the best thanks they can give is to live as Americans, realizing that what binds us together is far stronger than anything that divides us. All of the forces in this world will never be as strong as the things that unify us. Remember that, act on that, and you'll honor every veteran in ways you can't imagine." That was the message to our students, and I believe it applies equally to this board and this community. By setting a clear standard that the American flag should be displayed with prominence and respect. Remember that freedom isn't inherited, it's renewed. Every generation has to choose it, they have to defend it, you have to teach it. We're not making a statement of politics, we're making a statement of principle. We're saying that unity still matters, that shared purpose still matters, that in this district and in this country, we still believe there are things worth standing for. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michael Lefito.
Thank you. What a great turnout today, and thank you for all the previous speakers. My name is Michael Lefito, and I'll keep my comments brief as I want to focus on three points tonight. First, I want to sincerely compliment the district for the way our school honors Veterans Day. As I drove past schools yesterday and even walked down these hallways today, the American flags are displayed so proudly, and as I heard other veterans welcome like Mr. Aiello, it made me extremely proud to be part of this community. Not every district puts that level of effort into honoring these, those that have served, and so I do want to recognize the schools, the school board, and the principals. It truly does matter. Secondly, yesterday, we completed a major community service project at Wheaton-Warrenville South that reflects the heart of our students and this community. We were able to help 500 service members who won't be able to go home during the holidays at Great Lakes Base, and I want to publicly thank and compliment Wheaton-Warrenville South's football program, the girls' tennis program, including Patty Klausing that was here earlier, as well as the Key Club. More than 40 students showed up to help stuff Christmas stockings with supplies and gifts, and those will be shipped to those service members that can't go home during the holidays. Their teamwork and energy and willingness to help was inspiring, and it's another example of why our schools and our students stand out. Finally, I'd like to follow up on the request that I made at last month's board meeting. I'm asking that the school board consider adopting a policy on the American flag etiquette in our classrooms. Specifically, if there's another flag displayed in the classroom, that the American flag should be the largest and most prominently placed. This is standard flag etiquette and frankly, common sense. But currently, there's no formal policy in place, and it's not being consistently followed. To give you some context, this issue first came up to my attention during curriculum night. I was at, in my son's U.S. History class and noticed that the American flag, while present, was at the back of the classroom and was much smaller and placed in a small and conspicuous way. Meanwhile, another flag was prominently displayed at the front of the classroom, hanging from the whiteboard right next to the teacher's desk. To be clear, I'm not suggesting that the American flag should be the only flag allowed in the classroom. What I am saying is that there are multiple, if there are multiple flags displayed, the American flag should be the largest and most prominently positioned. That's simply common sense and a matter of respect. The matter, the American flag is not political and should not, and should be unifying. I respect, I respectfully ask that this be added and addressed at your next policy meeting. Thank you again for your effort, patriotism, and pride on display, on display at the district, as well as throughout the district, at the public schools, on Veterans Day. It's not unnoticed and it's deeply appreciated. I appreciate this. Thank you.
Under the superintendent's report, Dr. Schuler, any topics to report this?
Just two things I want to report quickly, and then I'm going to move it on to our ambassador's report. One, I think, shared by our Emerson students and staff this evening, but I want to recognize that Friday of this week is School Board Appreciation Day in Illinois. I say this often, that I don't think there are a lot of volunteer jobs that take as much time as that of a school board member or are at times as thankless as being a school board member can be, but you are so incredibly important to the leadership, the governance of our school district. And so, certainly on behalf of my team here at the district office and the entire team in District 200, thank you for your service as a school board member. Two, I do want to just ask very quickly, so I think as the board is aware, we expanded significantly our outreach, our engagement effort this year through the development of three new advisory committees. We had previously in the district, three standing committees, Citizens Advisory Committee, got a bilingual parent committee, and we developed the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee last year. And then we added to it three additional opportunities, given interest in the amount of engagement we had in our others. And so, I'm going to quickly just ask, Melissa, I'll start with you, if you could just kind of give a quick update on the new committee you started this year.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Schuler. So the new committee in the Ed Services Department, in addition to the bilingual parent advisory and the special education, is the Career Pathways Advisory Council. We have 14 business partners that are involved in this. We have had the opportunity to meet twice so far. We have four goals for our committee. One is to utilize this group to assist us in building business partnerships. We are also using this group to advise us on trends in professional learning for our staff and advise us on industry-recognized credentials that would be valuable for our students and advise us on parent education. We've met twice, and within those two meetings, we've accomplished a few things. The group has given us feedback on how and what we should do for parent education about career pathways. So we have even an opportunity that we're going to be advertising very soon based on feedback from the group. We've really looked at our portrait of a graduate as well and how that ties to what expectations would be for business partners. And then they've also given us some input on how to recruit business partners. So we will have two more meetings this year, and it's been really fantastic getting to know these community members and working with them.
Thank you. Thank you, Melissa. So Jason, would you mind sharing with us the technology committee?
Sure. One of the committees that we have is the Educational Technology Advisory Committee. What we're doing in here is to strengthen partnerships with the Department of Innovation and Technology and parents to try to scale what kinds of things parents can do at home in the area of educational technology. So each meeting, we've planned to cover a different topic. We've had two meetings so far. The first meeting was about artificial intelligence and what that looks like at each level of our, of our district. And then as a result, we also came up- And then as a result, we also came up with a parent guide that is age-specific that we'll be putting out to parents as a resource. The second topic that we just covered is information and media literacy. And then we had a very rich discussion of how our portrait of a graduate incorporates those particular skills, because we feel those skills are much needed in our changing world, especially with the advancement of AI.
Thanks, Jason. And then Matt and Chris.
Yes, Dr. Salagi and I have the honor to co-chair the School Safety and Student Wellness Parent Council. We've had two meetings. We have a great cross-section of parents that are part of that. We've had between 10 and 20 in the first two meetings. They're a motivated group that wants to help. We spent the first meeting going through a little shorter version of the school safety approach that our district takes and how it is connected to connecting students to school. So we went through that. We then gave our council members a chance to write in some questions for us that we took time between meetings to answer. We then gave them those answers in our second meeting. We also took some time to take questions from them on anything that they had on their mind, based on what they had learned during the first meeting. And then the majority of the meeting was spent looking at an edweek article that went through four best practices with school safety, and we let parents answer questions based on that. We then took that, and I think we're at a point now where we have a district safety committee of police, fire, they're the experts in the safety realm. This parent council are experts on being parents, and we are using them to help us ID some gaps in knowledge that perhaps we need to fill in for all parents, so they know the full approach that our district takes in regard to safety.
Great. So I want to just give you a snapshot of what they've been working on this year. Again, I know that was important for the board, especially as we went through the CAC process, to try to take advantage of the interest that we had from the community. And certainly, I'm thankful for our team for kind of helping to launch those additional opportunities. Last thing I want to just say, as I hand it off to the ambassadors to give their reports. So I think as the board is aware, this is the third year that we've had student ambassadors from our high schools. And actually, the journey of bringing ambassadors into the board process has actually also kind of helped us to really enhance significantly the way that we're utilizing student voice all across the system. I think we've shared with the board that a couple of years ago, Dr. Salagi and Mr. Biskin and I started a student leadership engagement process at our middle and high schools. We go to each of our schools three times a year to really listen to, hear from our students, and we actually expanded that just recently to also include 5th grade students. So we've been to two of our elementary schools, meeting with groups of 5th grade students, again, really exploring. So again, you've heard it at your meetings, when you have students here to really share the lens or what school looks like through their lens, that's also incredibly valuable for us as we think about our work, to make sure we're anchoring that on what our students are telling us their experience is like in school. We've spent a lot of time on the topic of safety. We've spent a lot of time on the topic of connectedness and what helps to connect students to school, and we're going to continue to move those conversations forward. So I wanted to share that with the board and use that as an opportunity to thank our ambassadors, while you weren't necessarily kind of those that moved us, you've really moved us into this space of really rethinking student voice and the role of it. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to our Wheaton North ambassadors. Get us started.
All right. Thank you. So we're just here to present some of the activities and athletics that happened at Wheaton North over October and a little bit of November. So first, we had the opportunity to run the badminton tournament, which is the annual tournament that we run through National Honor Society. And we had, you know, pretty decent turnout and was able to raise some money for Jack's Army, which is a local organization that Mr. Pribah, who's one of the teachers at our school, runs. Connect More, a brand-new club at our school, had their first visit to the Alto Senior Living Center, and they were able to, you know, I think they had some pretty decent turnout as well. Red Cross Club was able to hand out some candy to veterans. And Youth in Government had their mock trials and first pre-ledge at Niqua Valley High School. And we actually have Isabel Lindsay running for Illinois Chief Justice, which is the top position of the judicial side of Youth in Government.
So that was a video of one of the goals scored when our boys soccer team beat Lake Park. They were the number-one ranked team in our conference in the first round of playoffs, so that brought a lot of excitement and positive energy to the team. And I'm pretty sure the guy that scored that goal, that was his first goal in high school, so that's a pretty cool story for him. Other athletics updates, we kicked off our winter sports. I think basketball had their tryouts yesterday and today, and all our other winter sports have started as well. Our girls' first doubles team qualified for state. That was Julia Russell and Yulena Kristic. They didn't win that. South obviously won that. And then Boys Cross Country also had two state qualifiers. That was Jack Sanders and Judah Clark. And then our intramural basketball league kicked off last Monday. That's a ton of fun. There's always a bunch of students participating in that. And then, could you move it to... Thanks. Okay. For our academics update, Samrana Tyrova was our TCD Student of the Month. And then TCD is our program at COD, where students do more hands-on learning and more technical stuff for part of their day, and then they come to school for the rest. She's an EMT, and she's training to become a nurse. We also had 126 juniors take the national merit pre-SAT. And so in previous meetings, we've talked about national merit qualifying students, and all of these students took that test to both train for the SAT and then to see if they qualified for that. And then for, I can't quite recall how many years in a row, but for multiple years in a row, Wheaton North has been designated an exemplary school by the ISBE Report Card Committee. And then, thank you. Our marching band performed at University of Illinois at the end of October. Our winter play and our winter concert coming up. Our winter play is a Christmas story, and then our winter concert is going to be at Edmund Chapel, and that's going to be a combination of our orchestra, choir, and then band. Band, choir, and orchestra also had their fall concerts previously, and people from Monroe joined them to help them perform. And then we also have several, we have nine all-state singers from Flight, which is our show choir team. That's that picture on the bottom right there.
All right. In regards to our projects, we were able to get some things in motion. So we were able to meet with Dr. Salagi, who's sitting here to my right, and we were able to review some data on athletics and activity participation. So really, the question that is in our minds right now is how can we implement this data to the project we're working on? And then we were also able to consult with the principals advisory, which is, you know, a group of about 20 students who were able to share their thoughts on what they think about our project regarding increasing extracurricular activity at Wheaton North. And Mr. Cornet was able to connect with Mr. Cohen, who's the counseling chair, and really, he's going to help us facilitate in organizing the middle school outreach. So next steps, we're going to be creating a plan to share information on athletics information with 8th graders and then coordinating with middle schools. So this would consist of talking with the principals and the counselors at the schools as well, in order to really figure out how can we best delegate students at our school and share the information in like the most digestible way for 8th graders who are going to be coming to Wheaton North next year.
All right. I'm going to start us off. It was a really great month to be a Tiger this month, especially with all of our athletics. As North said, our winter athletics kicked off this week, starting with tryouts. We also had really amazing turnout with all of our fall sports, as we saw Riley and Reese Lepsey were double state champs, which was just amazing to see, they're so deserving. We also had Anna Intersagan, Priya, and Kelsey as state qualifiers. We were three-conference and sectional champs in tennis, and we took fourth in state. Boys and Girls Cross Country ran a super-hard sectional, but Addie Lindsay qualified for state and ran a PR and placed 41st in state. Michael Johansson took 25th place in state golf, and girls' swimming came fourth in sectionals. Avery and Caroline qualified for state in the 50 Free, and Avery broke our team record with her time of 23.86. So we were super proud of that. Our football also made it to the second round of playoffs, where we sadly lost against Nazareth. As well as our activities, the fall play, Sensibility sold out at every single show they had. I had an opportunity to go. It was an amazing show, super great experience. We had a great participation in Hollow Week and Week of Giving, which Hollow Week took place during Halloween, and so a lot of festive things. And Week of Giving raised a lot of money and donated a lot of food and paired up with some places around. Marching band got selected to be in the Chicago Thanksgiving Parade, so we were super excited for that. We had lots of senior nights all throughout the school, and our Eagle Scout Liam created a thongophone for Whittier Sensory Playground, so we're super proud of that.
Okay. So this month academically at South, we had our TCD and COD open houses, which gave a great opportunity for students to explore careers outside of South. We had our College Day, which during lunch, I think we had a variety of colleges come in to talk to, as well as teachers at the beginning of class talked about their college experience, which was really helpful, and I learned a lot about my teachers. We had our Tom Todd Scholarship Walk, which is an annual fundraising event where we, well, students walk, and I think it's a 2K, I'm not completely sure, but it honors Tom Todd, who was a former science teacher at South, and it raises money for a scholarship fund that's awarded to two runners at South. Our choir, orchestra, and band all had their fall concerts, which were great, and South got exemplary designation as well on the ISBE Report Card.
So I'm going to tell you guys about a new class at our school this year. It's called Social Media Marketing. It's a new dual credit class, so we work with COD for this class, so it's a fun high school and college credit class. It's taught by Mr. Brennan, and it's his first year, and he's really happy about it, as you can see in that picture. He's a very, very fun guy. The class is very immersive. Students learn the world of social media marketing, and you do it through a internship. So it's like a simulated kind of internship. You do it on the computer, and you just do like, you work with a fake brand. The brand is called Boohy. I'm actually in this class, and so is Emily. So it's a really fun class, and we're learning like the skills of social media marketing. We get to make real posts. We even get to do TikTok dances in the class, so it's really fun. And then we also get real-world experience. This year, social media marketing was one of the first classes out of teaching to get an opportunity to work with real Wheaton companies. I actually got the opportunity this year to work with Wheaton Park District, and I'm their marketing intern. So I started this Monday, and it's a really good experience. I'm super grateful for this class, because I'm going to learn a lot. And Mr. Brennan wanted me to say this, ILL, because he's a big Illinois fan.
So the past month, we've worked a lot on our project, which is bathrooms at South, making them a safe and comfortable space for all students. At the beginning of the month, we surveyed our advisory groups to gather issues regarding the bathrooms and identified a couple of top issues regarding hand dryers not working, overcrowding, the concern of substance use in the bathrooms, and overall cleanliness. In response to those surveyed, we determined a couple of possible solutions, incorporating the advisory group's feedback. We've looked at replacing hand dryers with paper towels, creating a sort of repeat offender list to prevent overcrowding and substance use, where designated students would have to go to the nurse's bathroom instead. We've looked at implementing vape detectors in big stalls to combat substance use and to create clearer signage around the bathrooms about expectations. So obviously, the next steps would be kind of finalizing these solutions and focusing down to kind of the more root problem and outlining the implementation and fundraising for this project. Sorry.
I think that's good. Any questions from board members?
Anybody know what a thongophone is? I would have figured you'd know, Eric. No?
I know a little bit.
Tell us.
I did some research when I was writing about it. I even asked him about it. It's kind of like a table-like thing. You see it a lot in Blue Man Group. It's very similar to something that they use. So there are little like drumsticks that you pat over top of it, and they make noise. So they put it in the Whittier Sensory Playground, and it's really cool.
Yeah, very cool. Thanks. That's great to know. I thought for sure, Eric, you would know. All right, onto the consent agenda tonight. Acceptance of gifts from Wheaton Warrenville South Tiger Paws. Approval of post-curriculum content for Principles of Engineering High School course for community review. Approval of maintenance vehicles purchase. Approval of bills payable and payroll. Approval of minutes, October 8, 2025, regular meeting, open. October 22, 2025, committee of the whole, open. October 24, 2025, special meeting with local elected officials, open. And approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to June 2024, as allowable by law. Approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Board, any items that you want removed from the consent agenda? All right, hearing none. Dr. Schuler, any additional information?
One, just to thank you, the first item on there is a gift from Paws. We're incredibly thankful for all the organizations that raise funds for us, Paws certainly being one of them. And then two, just to call out that the second item, the curriculum for Principles of Engineering, that's the continued expansion of your engineering pathway. So Mrs. Murphy is giving the board an update, but just want to call out that's the official approval of that course.
Thank you, board. Any questions or comments? All right, board, I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rutledge?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kulevitz. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rutledge?
Yes.
Ms. Kulevitz?
Yes.
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 Yes. Facilities Approval Consent Agenda. The items on the facilities consent agenda include: Approval of fiscal year '26 school maintenance project grant submission. Approval of bids for 2026 facility improvements, paving, concrete, work at Wheaton North High School. Approval of bids for 2026 facility improvements, roofing project at Lowell Elementary School, and roofing tuck-pointing projects at Wheaton Warrenville South High School. Board, any items that members want removed from the facilities approval consent agenda? Hearing none. Dr. Schuler, any additional information?
No, just to call out, items two and three were reviewed with your facilities committee at their last meeting. You might remember, a month ago, you approved about $4 million in mechanical work for next summer. This is the balance of your Sherman Durges work. So again, continuing your investment at about $7.2 million this summer.
Thank you. Board, any questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Board, I need a motion and a second to approve the facilities approval consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Long.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rutledge. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Rutledge?
Yes.
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 Yes. We have one action item on the agenda tonight, and the action item is resolution providing for the issuance of not to exceed $75 million general obligation school bonds for the purpose of constructing the middle school projects approved at the November 5, 2024 referendum, providing for the levy of a district annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds and authorizing the sale of the said bonds to the purchase thereof. So I'm going to read a blurb quickly, and then we'll... Is that right? I think I have to go first. Okay. Go ahead, Dave. Yes. Yes.
Resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed $75 million general obligation school bonds for the purpose of constructing the middle school projects approved at the November 5, 2024 referendum, providing for the levy of a just district annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds and authorizing the proposed sale of said bonds to the purchase thereof.
Dr. Schuler, do you want to introduce any additional information from staff?
Dr. O'Keefe's up at the podium. I'm gonna let him do that. I'm just gonna remind the board and the community. So it does not feel like it was probably eight or nine months ago when we were kind of projecting for you all of the steps to put in place the referendum that was approved by the community in November. But we are actually in what really are your final couple of steps. You've already approved two of the bid issuances. You approved the sale of the first half of the referendum bonds. This is the resolution that's gonna authorize the sale of the second half, which is tied to the timing. And then just to preview, as we get into December, we anticipate bringing to the board the final round of construction bids. And so really, with those pieces done, our attention will turn solely to implementation, to actually doing all of the work, which sounds easy. It's not gonna be easy, but we really have marched through all of the steps. So Dr. O'Keefe, I'll hand it to you if you wanna go ahead and walk them through.
Certainly. Good evening. Thank you for your time and consideration tonight. I'm actually gonna turn this over to Jennifer Currier, who's one of your partners. She's with PMA, works with Bob Lewis. So this is your municipal advisor that helps us with everything related to the first issuance and the second issuance. She's got a quick little walkthrough just to help you understand where we've been and where we're headed.
Thank you very much. So this slide is just a recap of the sale for the first series of bonds that was done, as was pointed out, about eight or nine months ago. So back in March 2025, early in the month, we had very robust results for the first $75 million bond sale, where you saw 12 bidders participate, which is great. And you can see the winning bid there at the top with the lowest true interest cost, or TIC, was from JP Morgan. Okay. Oh, one thing I wanted to note here, the winning rate of a 355 was about 50 basis points lower than we had estimated. So that really sets the district up well heading into this second series of bonds. Okay, so this debt service chart shows you what that 2025 bond series, that 75 million from earlier this year, what those payments look like. So you can see that first payment is a little higher than the balance and that's because we knew that there were more bonds to be issued and more bonds coming to fill in those later years. Okay. These green columns represent the estimated debt service or the total payments on those 2026 bonds that we're talking about. So the balance of the referendum bonds. You could see there is a smaller payment being added on top of that first larger payment you saw in the previous chart. And the balance is relatively level, but there's this larger payment at the end. So during the referendum campaign, it was always the plan to have two 15-year bond issues for, to generate the total referendum proceeds. The second series that we're talking about tonight was originally anticipated to be issued a year later. So there were going to be two large payments at the end of that structure. But since the timeline was accelerated, the construction draw schedule was accelerated, the district needs to borrow about a year sooner. And so now we just have one larger payment at the end of the structure. And that just means that the principal that would have been in the second year is just spread over the remaining term. Okay, so here is what that looks like in aggregate with some historical context added to this chart. So you can see three years of historical bond levies. The green columns, again, representing the estimated payments on this series 2026 bonds, which would be the balance of the referendum authority. And you can see there how the payments, the tops of those green columns, provide for level annual payments for the duration of the referendum bond repayment. There's a little yellow bar at the very top of levy year 2025 and that represents approximately $2 million of principal that the district is able to amortize early while in that first year. That will be paid with funds on hand available in the debt service fund, so that's not an impact to the taxpayer. It's a debt service payment, but the district already has those funds. So this summary chart just compares some of the key statistics between what was estimated at the time of the referendum in that first column under referendum campaign versus what the estimate is for the current plan. And so as we discussed, this second phase is happening about a year sooner than originally estimated. The estimated net debt service, so the total principal and interest cost, is slightly, estimated to be slightly lower than it was during the referendum campaign. However, since we do have one less year for the aggregate repayment, the annual debt service for the plan is estimated to be about 12.9 million versus 12.3. And again, that's because we have one year less for the aggregate repayment. However, we are still continuing to project a reduction in the annual payment and the bond portion of the tax bill for the homeowner. And just a reminder, these are estimates and of course, subject to change with the actual bond sale. But I will tell you that these numbers are based on rates back in August at this point. We would expect that if you had to sell those bonds today, your rate would be lower than what these numbers show. So there's a good trend going into the second sale. And then finally, just the key dates that remain tonight would be the adoption of that parameters resolution, authorizing key terms of the sale. The bonds aren't being sold just yet. That would occur early in January with a closing or funds received in February. So if there aren't any questions or if there are, feel free to, feel free to ask them.
I have one question on the, the yellow bar on that graph with the payments. I'm failing to remember the term when we reduced our tax levy a couple of years ago. Abatement, that's it. This is in lieu of, this is in lieu of an abatement, we're applying it to principal.
That's right.
Correct? Okay, thank you.
I'm slightly confused on that as well because, so are we not abating as we had previously?
I could maybe speak to this out of the finance committee. So, you know, the precedent we said was that these are the communities' dollars and we wanted to return that access to the community. By doing it in this manner, it's actually more financially beneficial. It's still giving it back, but it's giving it back as this payment against principal that when you magnify that across the term of the financing is net beneficial. I don't know if you want to add any additional color to that?
Well, that's right. Just thinking of it like this. This is $2 million that is being paid upfront in principal next October, so part of the first overall payment. That's gonna save you interest over 15 years of the life of that bond instead of a tiny, tiny individual savings that may show up on a homeowner's tax bill when you look at the 2026 tax levy.
And I completely agree, but I remember at the time advocating for that, like why give something back if we're asking for more? So I kind of feel like the optics are a little bit odd. Or, and you just want to be clear that we are no longer abating that. We are now using that as for this project.
You abated though, the original ones. I think what you're talking about, the first one was a true abatement. So when we, the board voted on that, you did abate those dollars. When you did that, you did so knowing that there was likely going to be a little bit of accumulated fund balance left that the board did not want to make a decision on until we got to this. So the first one was a true abatement. That was not, you did exactly what you told the community that you were gonna do. This is just the remaining fund balance that you wanted to get to the end of the payment to see what was actually left. So it's the, kind of the decision point you're making right now with what's left. So it didn't change what you did previously.
Okay, that helps. Thank you.
Yep, and I understand what you're saying, but also keep in mind, when we did the abatement, it was before the referendum passed.
Right.
So I think we were a little, you know, I guess we could have held on and instead of doing that abatement, done this after the referendum passed, but we decided at that point, we've got this ex, you know, this surplus. Let's, you know, it was a little more than half, I think, that we abated.
I think the thinking back then was that that money had been targeted for Hubble, which technically this yellow money has as well, but I understand and I agree with putting it towards this. My only other comment, if I can. Here's your last slide. If we were to take the debt out an extra year, like as it was originally planned, what would that look like for the change in the median homeowner tax bill? Like, would it go back to being the $71 or no?
Yeah, it would not be as big of a reduction. We did take a look at that. I think what drew the district away from that recommendation was the added debt service cost by putting on an additional year there and straying from the target of having 15-year repayments on each issue. It does end up being more expensive in the long run to do it that way and it still didn't quite achieve the initial reduction in the bond levy because it was still being accelerated. That issuance was still a year.
Thank you.
And right, it was more driven on moving the borrowing up than changing the payment term?
Correct. And I understand that. I think the thing that just kind of, when we went into the referendum, the promise was that this is kind of what the homeowners would expect and now we're lowering that. So I don't think there would be a great uproar because in the long run, we're saving money and accelerating the process.
Frank, can you go back to just that slide where he showed? So, thank you, right here. So actually, Angel, I think it's a great question. We spent a lot of time on finance committee. Bottom line is just given present reality of having to adjust the timeline, something was going to change from that original chart, right? Either that, kind of that bottom line, what we think is the aggregate impact to the taxpayer. If you would have done it, kind of what you advocated, because we looked at that bottom line is if you go back up to the estimated net debt service, the impact of doing that to try to kind of level out that $71 then would have put your estimated net debt service beyond what we also said to the community. So something was gonna change, no matter what. I think finance committee, if, and Eric, tell me if I have this wrong, looked at, let's be as fiscally conservative as we can and this is the path. Save the community the most money in the aggregate, understanding that that bottom line changes. So we kind of had to pick between one of the two options. We felt, one, this is clearly the most conservative and it was the best path.
Thank you.
And isn't there one less payment also at the end? In other words, when this falls off, we have a bigger savings. That's only gonna apply to whoever's still here.
Yeah, you're done a year earlier, right? Like you're done paying for all this a full year earlier, which is going to provide some board in the future, obviously flexibility, but sure, right? And I think we've said that, practical reality is you've done a great job maintaining your facilities and bringing them up to the standard we are. But mark this out, 16 years, your buildings are going to age. In 16 years, your high schools are gonna need some level of investment. And so I think you are setting a future board up to be in the same position, candidly, this board was to make good decisions around the middle school.
Yeah, this, the way that this has been put together means that your 2040 tax levy, for those that still may be around, actually gets this, that's the last time that this debt will be attached to a tax levy. It'll get paid in October of 2041. So yeah, same exact like scenario that you've gone through for the last two years will be presented to a Board of Education at that point in time, too.
Thank you. I have one more question that is not related to this action, to the action to be taken, but about the project itself. So there is a rumor in the community that next summer's work could impact the start day of school. Is that accurate? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
The construction schedule has not changed at all. Substantial completion is supposed to be done first Friday in August.
Perfect. Thank you.
I have one question. I'm hoping you can comment on something that I think was in your presentation last time you talked about this. So as we, you know, a year ago, made these assumptions and are now getting closer to them not being assumptions, but more real facts as we get closer to the bond issuance, there were some factors that have shifted. And I remember there being a list of one of them, one specifically being different EAVs. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. I'm gonna actually let the expert who's in the room talk about that specifically.
So the, at the time of the referendum campaign, we did not know the 2024 equalized assessed value of the district. Once we inputted the actual 2024 EAV, that actually affected the impact of, you know, a year-over-year change to the taxpayer by about $5. And that's just information we didn't have, you know, at the time that we were putting together the referendum plan ahead of November 2024.
All right, thank you. So board, I need a motion and a second to approve the resolution providing for the issuance of not to exceed $75 million general obligation school bonds for the purpose of constructing the middle school projects approved at the November 5, 2024 referendum, providing for the levy of a district annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds and authorizing the proposed sale of said bonds to the purchase thereof.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gerpy?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ebison. Sorry. Ms. Hutchison, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Under oral reports, we have two oral reports tonight. The first is the oral report on the 2025 proposed property tax levy. Dr. Schuler?
Dr. O'Keefe.
Perfect lead in to another subject that everybody's anxious and wanting to discuss at 8 o'clock on a Wednesday night. So ish. So it's time and thank you again for your attention. It's time to bring you the tentative tax levy for the 2025 tax year. So a few major things that happen to get to the actual results of a tax levy, all of which occur from a finality perspective at the county clerk's office. And I'll explain what that looks like as we go. But as a reminder to the board, there are a few key terms that show up and are discussed during a tax levy. So the tax cap, or technically PTEL is the acronym. That's the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law. DuPage County is a tax cap county. That means we are not allowed to ask year-over-year in terms of operating outside of new construction for more than 5% or CPI, whatever is less. There's CPI, which drives the tax levy. I'll get into that in just a minute. Jennifer actually mentioned equalized assessed value. So that's the assessed taxable value that shows up on all of our tax bills at home and helps to drive specifically what the tax rate or limiting rate is. And that's the rate charged per hundred dollars worth of value. Something new that we added in this year, just to give the board and the community a bit more of an in-depth look into the tax levy as a whole, really what is a tax levy? It's a statutory requirement if we want to seek funding from the county, from the taxpayers inside the county. This is not the extension. It's our request that goes to the county. Why is it important? Because it comprises almost 80% of the anticipated revenues in our school district. So obviously, if we did not do this, there would be some significant other challenges that we would run into. How is it actually calculated? And I'll show you the formula and I'll say every year, it's pretty simplistic. It is just a simple math formula with a ton of inputs into it, but it is a simple calculation when you get to it. If you look at just the overall, what the board does, so you approve a tax levy. It's not the final figure. We submit our request to the board and if our request is higher than the final output specifically from the county, who determines what the actual extension is and what the tax rates are, then those get adjusted. is and what the tax rates are, then those get adjusted. For those of you that have been around for a few years, we can ask for anything, you've heard me say, we can ask for anything. We're only obligated to be extended dollars that we are legally requesting and that are capped based on PTEL. So again, CPI, CPI drives all of the new dollars within a tax levy. It's always the 12-month year-over-year comparison that is used from the prior December. So for this specific tax levy request, we are using CPI from December of 2024 that was reported this past January. The actual year-over-year increase in CPI between 23 and 24 was 2.9%. What it does not take into account, and certainly the correlation that we have to understand and how we balance your budget, is we have other factors and other costs that very well could be higher than CPI as a whole. So a little bit of history on CPI. I just saw a figure today, if you look for when CPI was put into place under PTEL until 2024, the average on an annual basis is 2.53%. So we've had some, certainly some spikes during the pandemic years, but on average over the last 30-plus years, CPI has been at 2.53%. You see those few years in advance of the pandemic, the couple of years during the pandemic, 2024, the levy you approved last year was at 3.4%. This year again is at 2.9%. We're projecting, which will get updated with the five-year projections, 2.5%, but I can tell you CPI through September, as calculated at the federal level, was 3%. So these projections don't have anything to do at this point with your five-year projections. Once we have those knowns for what CPI is going to be in December, we'll incorporate that into our presentation to you in January. So EAV, again, that's the assessed value, so it's not the property or market value of a property, it's the tax assessed value of a property, and we participate, we are, our boundaries are within three different townships. Specifically, the biggest is Milton Township, second biggest is Winfield Township, third biggest is Naperville Township, and that's, much of that is the slice along Warrenville, that's Napier Properties, when you think of like Napier Commons, that newer subdivision that went in within the last few years. Sorry, I realize this is not showing up the way that it did on my screen, but by class as a whole, the biggest class of property that we have from a category perspective is residential at almost 80%, commercial being the second largest at not quite 17%. So those two major categories make up almost 97% of the actual value of properties in our district. Just a quick little analysis, if you kind of project out things, new growth and where existing EAV can go and where specifically CPI could go, this gives you an idea of what the future could look like when it comes to the total assessed values inside of our district boundaries. In the, in your green folder, there's also a few handouts that has a few slides that are blown up, hopefully a little bit bigger to read. This is the first of those slides in front of you, and again, we'll spend a lot more time talking about this when we get into the five-year projection conversation in January. So if these projections that are in place for this presentation hold true by the end of the decade, we'd be at close to $5.4 billion worth of equalized assessed value inside of our district boundaries. The EAV changes, which is not something that you or we are control of, these are percentages that are based on township assessors and the final assessed values that happen at the clerk's office. You see, for this specific levy, we're at a pretty significant rate of expected increase at almost 9.5%. That's driven by two things. One, we are hearing from every assessor's office in DuPage County that the assessed values of properties are going up somewhere between 8 and 10%. This year, after almost the exact same increase last year, and last year was attached to a quadrennial reassessment, this year is based strictly on what people are willing to pay for properties and the associated value of those properties. So it's all being driven by the market, what's happening in the market, the difference between what that is and what we're projecting is new construction, which gets added on top of this in terms of any EAV change. So you see the existing EAV, we've got it at 8.5, it could be a little bit lower, it could be a bit higher, it doesn't change the tax levy as a whole, it just changes the actual tax rate, the limiting rate, when the extension is compiled by the clerk's office. We do have $40 million in new growth for this year, similar to conversations from the prior years. This is a bit of a balloon, as we would say. We've gotten information from all three assessor's offices indicating that new construction for us could be around the $27 million mark, so healthy, we average about $30 million annually. As a reminder to the board and to the public, if there's new construction that we miss, and we miss $1 of it, we miss that dollar times CPI in perpetuity. So we are always overestimating new construction, but as I mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, we only get what's eligible to get, so we can overestimate, but what happens in terms of the calculation and the extension from the clerk's office is real. So if new construction is 27 million, that's what will come out from the clerk's office. I just do not want to give us the opportunity to miss out on something that maybe was missed by the assessor's offices. This is actually a famous chart that Mr. Frawley used for a lot of years, it's just the symbiotic relationship between the tax rate and EAV is traditionally, if EAV is rising faster than CPI, that means the tax rate goes down, and then vice versa as a whole. You can see we're in a pretty good prolonged period. When you look at the bottom left of increases in EAV that have outpaced overall increases in CPI, which is why our overall limiting or tax rate has been dropping the past decade. Speaking of that, this is also, there's a couple other handouts, so you can see this information a little bit cleaner in your packet as a whole. So back in the levy year 2015, we were at an overall tax rate of 5.311 for levy 24, so that's the extension from the levy you approved last year, a little bit more than 4.55 as a whole, so you can see that precipitous drop except for one year in that rate as a whole. Here are your distinct comparables, you see the same trend across your comparables, so there's Barrington on the left, us second, so next to Barrington, then you go to Elmhurst, Indian Prairie, Naperville 303, and then St. Charles is on the far right, but a pretty consistent pattern for all of our comparable school districts. And again, we don't determine a tax rate that happens in our district or other districts, that's all determined by the clerk's office, but certainly history proves that most of the information that you see from our comparables follows the same suit or pattern as us. One thing that's newer within the last couple of years, specifically on the fund balance side of things, we are now required, even though we already do this in the budget, and we do it in our budget hearing, we're required to put in your fund balances when we talk about a tax levy preparation and presentation to the Board of Education. So these are your fund balances that are based on your AFRs coming out of frontline with a fund balance in fiscal year 24 of just a nudge above 31%. We've actually gotten the drafts for your fiscal year 25 audit. This percentage has not been filled in yet, they're not done done with it. We would anticipate it being a little bit lower than this as a whole, not significantly, but we do, we do, based on our conversation with the auditors today, plan on bringing you your audits with the presentation from the auditors at your board meeting next month. And again, same thing, instead of looking at it from the financial statement side of things, this was your cash balances as of June 30, 2025, so finishing the 25 fiscal year. So the extension, what do we have to put into it? Obviously, anything from a contractual perspective, we have to factor in inflationary costs, we look at the levy as a whole, the levies always split between two fiscal years, so this levy that you, we will ask you to approve in December, there'll be a collection in the spring, and then the remaining collection next fall, so split between two fiscal years. I talked about new construction, and why do we, why have we traditionally in this district asked for all of CPI? Part of it is because we, those dollars are important to make sure we can balance the budget. The other part of it is, even if there's a minimal surplus, there's always the uncertainty at the state level around timing of when payments are received, or whether or not reimbursements are happening from a probation perspective in a manner that we anticipate. So we've traditionally asked for the full amount of CPI, and then we also need to ensure that of the Sherman Durges projects that you have approved tonight and last month, that we've got the requisite operating funds to support those projects. So the actual math problem, pretty simple. The 174 million, so line one, 174,398,419, that's the actual operational extension as extended by the clerk's office for levy year 24. CPI from last December, as I mentioned, is 2.9%. Multiply those two things together, we get our baseline operational tax levy for 2025, not quite 179.5 million dollars. We factor in new construction, and then new construction obviously has to be multiplied by a multiplier, which is the anticipated limiting or tax rate on the operating side, so that comes out to about $4. You'll see that in just a minute. So for every new million dollars, it equates to about $40,000 in new money, so you look at that, that's about $1.6 million. The debt service line here is always a distinct calculation that comes from the debt that has been issued. This is an estimate using the information that's been presented to you tonight by PMA. The final extension on the debt levy side of things will be calculated once the bonds are sold in January and they are closed. So as of now, we're expecting a total levy of about $194.3 million. And again, in debt service, that includes two things, the 1% loss for cause that gets added on to that by the clerk's office, and then we're estimating about $250,000 in aggregate refunds. Those aggregate refunds is something newer to the tax levy side of things. Those are refunds that have been given back to taxpayers after bills have been sent, but refunds have occurred. The local governing tax authority law, a change from three years ago, allows the clerk to put those dollars back into the extension as a whole when they're calculating the final extension. And you may recall, we do not put this money into operating. If there is any of these dollars, we put this directly into your Fund 6 of your Capital project funds to help us with Sherman Durges or anything else that we're focusing time on. This looks, this just comes from the PMA spreadsheet on what it looks like from a overall perspective. So if you look at the bottom right, we're projecting a tax rate below $4 on the operating side, and then with the information we have now about debt service, this will change a little bit. That's about 30 cents there for roughly a overall tax extension when you talk about the limiting rate or the tax rate of $4.27 per $100 of value. The overall breakdown, that you look at the levy extension over time, so if you look at the 24 levy, 92% of that levy was attached to the operations side of things, the operating levy, we're predicting that that's going to be a little bit higher, meaning your debt service aspect of your levy has shrunk in line with conversations that we've had with the public. And if you're just looking at a straight overall projected percentage increase, so the operating side of things with CPI of 2.9% and 40 million in new construction, that would equate to a 3.8125% increase year-over-year on the operating side, obviously, pretty significant decrease on the debt service side of things, as we've discussed, and we're predicting, I don't, I don't think our new construction is going to get to 40 million, and if it does, this is what the tax rate's going to look like as a whole and the overall reduction, but it very well could be very close to a 2.5% total year-over-year increase for the levy in aggregate.
Board, any questions?
There was a reference to refunds in there, those are appeal, not appeals of the assessment, but protests of the rate.
Protests, so protests of, well, it could be the assessed value, the equalized assessed value of a home, it could be deductions that were missed somehow by a homeowner, it could be overall protests in general where it goes to PTAB at the DuPage County level or at the state level if it goes beyond the county. But yes, so that's any protest related to a request for a reduction in taxes, related to somebody that's filed a petition that's occurred after the tax bills have been sent, and a refund has been granted.
Yeah, I think there are two different issues. One is an appeal of the assessed value, and the other is a protest of the rate.
The protest of the rate is not something that a individual tax, I mean, so protest of rate, meaning like from a legal statute perspective, or a homeowner protesting the rate?
It's typically something related to larger commercial properties.
Oh, well, I mean, I can tell you, because I get, I get anything over $100,000 or more, that they are protesting the assessed value of the property, not the tax rate associated with it.
That's an appeal. That's an appeal, not a protest.
Yep. Yes, different language, same meaning, they are, they are indicating, they are appealing specifically that they don't believe the value of the property that's been assessed by the assessor is actually the value of the property.
Larger property owners will claim that the rate was too high, not the valuation, but the rate was too high, and that's treated as a protest as opposed to an appeal.
Any other questions, Board? Brian, structurally, I don't think anything changed. I think the formulaic process is the same, correct?
Process is the same.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, obviously, there are a ton of inputs that come in.
Absolutely.
And we have to rely on our partners to help us with that, but the formula itself, how we calculate this and how we build the budget around this in advance of bringing this to you is why the outcome looks the way it does.
Thank you. All right, onto oral report number two, development of the Vision 2030 strategic plan. Dr. Schuler?
So at our last committee of the whole meeting, we spent just a little bit of time on this at the tail end of the meeting after Melissa's presentation, really at that meeting focusing on a process that we were recommending, that we follow in terms of building the plan. We anticipate a couple of discussions with the board as we move into the spring during the development of the plan, but my hope for tonight was just to make sure that the board is solidly anchored in what we view as the six major components of a strategic plan, and then give you an opportunity right at the onset as you're reflecting on the plan that we're just completing to share any feedback you have on either what you really liked from a board perspective and/or any major concerns. The specific elements, as we move through the spring, you will have opportunity to give feedback on as we move toward a final copy. So this is, this, our final draft that we bring to you, this is just high level. So in your green folder, there's just a one page of the actual strategic plan document, and I just want to describe, I guess, from our perspective, what we would consider to be the six major components of both this plan and what we anticipate will be a part of the plan moving forward. One, the visioning element. So new to this plan was the development of the portrait of a graduate, so that kind of student-facing vision for what we're looking for that's anchored, all that we've done, has really then supplemented the traditional mission and vision statement that the district and the board have had in policy. Now, I think you've heard it mentioned a couple of times, Jason mentioned a little bit earlier tonight, as we've worked with some of our advisory committees, both CAC, the Technology Committee, we've really begun to look at advancements in AI, machine learning, some of those pieces that we think are shifting the landscape of work, and we just want to make sure that we feel comfortable in how they're represented in the portrait of a graduate, but we absolutely anticipate those three components still working in combination kind of as the center of the vision. Two is your strategy element. So on either side of the, kind of the central visioning element, you have the major strategies. So on our plan, they're kind of split into academic excellence, operational excellence, strategies. These also appear on the dashboard, right, that's on your website, right? So the strategy is what are we doing over the life of the plan to address whatever gaps or needs that we've identified. Three, metrics, right, your key performance measures. On your dashboard that's on your website, right, that's really the indicator side of your strategic plan, and it is all of the key metrics we monitor, you monitor on an annual basis. Said a couple of times, and I kind of understand this question every time that it's asked, there isn't necessarily a one-to-one correspondence between metric and strategy, right? They work together, certainly, right, as we look at or measure outcomes, and then use that to formulate things that we need to improve, but again, from But again, from, from an operational standpoint, kind of the, the metrics are our key performance metrics that we're going to watch every year that is going to help to inform where we need to put time and energy. Fourth piece, certainly in the development of the plan, is an engagement process. And I think in the process that we described at the last meeting, our, our team has found greater value in using a small core team to kind of do the work, but then a broader engagement process to go out and get feedback on the work, right? Which, there are other districts and other plans that are developed by almost like crowdsourcing with a big group, the, the whole, the whole piece. I think we've found greater value in ultimately using a smaller team to do the work and then really leaning in heavily to your advisory committee structure, to our internal structures to make sure that we get feedback both during development and then once we have a plan to, to bring back. Fifth key element is really just what you're looking at. I've always been a believer that if you can't take a strategic plan and find a way to put it on one piece of paper, it's too much for an organization to, to take in. I think plans that are kind of in a binder with lots and lots of pages, not consumable, not actionable. And so we have always, through the three plans that we've developed, made sure that it can fit on a piece of paper, right, as a visual representation. And then really, the sixth element is just the deployment strategy. Once it's developed, how do we make sure that that's a living document over the life of the, the four years? Really, for you at the board level, what that's looked like once you've approved the plan is every summer, we bring to you a recommended work plan for the upcoming year, always driven by the, the strategies and the plan. You have an opportunity to provide input, actually, it's usually started by your feedback to me through the evaluation process where you identify things that are important to you. We worked that in with our team over the summer, kind of looking at the strategies, bring to you a work plan, you approve it in August, and then once that work plan for the year is approved, that becomes our kind of true north beacon on what we're working on. I think the board has seen, we try to do as, as good of a job as we can of making sure when we bring reports to you, either at a board meeting or committee of the whole, that it's tied very closely to the work plan that you've approved for the year. And that becomes important for the organization because one of the things that we share, certainly with the organization, is we try to define a plate at the beginning of the year and be very mindful of the fact that if that plate is full, if we start adding stuff during the year as kind of needs and interests come up without being cognizant of what we're pulling away, it's difficult for the organization, I think, to have clarity. So again, just quick summary, the visioning elements, vision, mission, portrait of a graduate, strategies, indicators, right, metrics, a good, solid engagement process, a product that eventually fits on one piece of paper, and then I think a well-thought-out deployment process so that what you approve, you know, is really going to drive work and improvement over the, the four years. No strategic plan, and I guess the last piece that I'll say is, I think every plan has to be agile. So we develop a plan with a four-year look. The purpose of that kind of annual process of setting work plans is something's going to change over the next four years that we're not anticipating right now. And we may not have any way of anticipating what it's going to be. And so plan has to be built with a level of agility to respond to things as they come up. Your previous plan, we had no way of predicting that a global pandemic was going to emerge in the middle of the plan and suddenly kind of send us different directions. It's not usually at that magnitude, but, but bottom line is, still has to be agile. So I guess I want to stop there and really just the goal of kind of first conversation tonight is to understand from, from you at, at a board level, kind of understanding those six elements, what have you really liked in the plan that we've just completed? Do you have any immediate feedback that kind of helps to guide our work before we prepare to come back to you in January to have kind of the next conversation as we start to dig into those six areas specifically?
Board?
I think I've appreciated each of the different components you have, particularly the condensed version of our strategic plan, because I think everyone can understand and digest it, and so it's easier for it to fulfill its purpose of keeping all of these different kind of moving parts, you know, going in the same direction. One thing I also particularly like is that we have the academic excellence strategies and also the operational excellence strategies. I think sometimes those can be sometimes forgotten, but they provide a really good foundational health, and it's important for them to be included in like long-term strategy as well. The one question I have, which it sounds like is being addressed, is the portrait of a graduate. And given how much has shifted in the workplace that students are going into and the world since this was developed, if it's still an accurate representation of what we want our graduates to be?
Some similar themes, just in general, the, the approach and how this all fits together, I really like. And to Julie's point, you know, we talk a lot about how the operational excellence strategies give us the flexibility to do what we want to from an academic excellence standpoint. Probably most, you know, proud of the portrait of a graduate, though, and how we focus all of this on the student. That said, I also feel that that's the component just because of how much has changed in the world in the past few years, in the workplace, in the educational environment, where we probably need the biggest refresh or at least contemplate the biggest refresh. The only other thing that jumps out at me is, you know, like any organization, we have our mission, why we exist, our vision, what we want to achieve. I do feel, based on other strategic planning processes I've been through, that we might want to consider whether we also include in some form or fashion our values or a value statement. So how we want to, from a principles and ethics standpoint, achieve that vision. So I would just ask the, the team to maybe contemplate whether that's something as we try to really build a district culture that we can be proud of. But it's, I think, a great foundation, so thank you. And I do like how you've discussed kind of breaking it to those smaller groups within your team to, to tackle the, the challenge.
I agree with what both Julie and Eric said. I do like the agility piece that you spoke to and the fact that the, the dashboard and the yearly kind of initiatives are flexible. I know what I had notes on was, you know, what are we, what are we most proud of and what kind of vision moving forward? I absolutely agree about the portrait of a graduate. But I mean, if I, if I pick out one on each side of the strategies, the learning acceleration is something I think, you know, collectively, we should really be proud of. I mean, it's evident in all our scores. And, you know, it's been a big focus. And then on the operational excellence, it's the facilities, you know, the middle school plan, as well as the continuing funding of Sherman Durgess. And kind of moving forward, I think, obviously, learning has to continue to be number one. But I do think continued focus on the post-secondary, both pathways and just in general is important. And I think what's really going to be important in this five-year plan, and we'll get more into it as we do the five-year forecast, but it's just the fiscal health, because we do, we do have more challenges ahead of us in the next five years than we've had in the past five years. So that's my input.
A couple thoughts. One is, this strat, this strategic plan has been an anchor for us and carried us through a lot of different times, and it's worked. I think that's what the true measure of a great plan or a great strategy is it works. So I would not, I would really be cautious about changing too much of, of what we have here. Not that we shouldn't, but I think we should just really examine if we're going to change something. Second, and Eric's point is really interesting on the culture, I would have said it's kind of in each one of the bullet points, but maybe it makes sense to pull it out. I'm not sure. It's an interesting thing to examine, so I think it's worthy of study and worthy of considering. But I just, I'll go back to my first point. This plan has worked so well for us, and the, the way it's used, been used to guide our work, guide our priorities, guide our choices, our investments, it's really been just outstanding. So I just really cautious want to protect that. Anyone else?
I'll make a comment. So Dave, I like, I know, I'm going to make you laugh, so.
I know, thanks.
I like how you said the most important thing is learning, and I think when I look at the portrait of a graduate, I get concerned about changing it too much based on the changes of AI and things coming in. I think our focus should be teaching students how to learn, like how to be critical thinkers, how to synthesize information, and not so much pigeonholes, like AI is not going to give me that job, so I need to do this, kind of thing. I think we need to teach them how to think, and I would like that to continue to be reflected in the portrait of a graduate. I was going to say, and I, I think that's all I'll say.
My point was really great.
Your point was great.
Awesome.
Sorry, Angela, if I could, I don't want to be maybe misunderstood with my input on there. To me, I think less about things like the advent of AI than when you look at the careers that are maybe going to be the ones that are the opportunities for people. You know, there's, there's a lot going on right now where skilled trades are, again, providing real avenues of opportunity. And, you know, similarly, I don't just look at post-secondary, but how do we prepare our students to also be just good citizens, to be functional human beings? So I guess I look at it more holistically than just, you know, technology trends and things of that nature.
Thank you. And you actually reminded me of my second point. I like the idea of a sort of, and maybe I'm misunderstanding that, but sort of a general value statement. I think bringing, bringing backwards like honor and integrity and instilling that in our students and really making it a, an achievable goal and expectation, I like that idea.
Great point.
Just two really quick things based on what you guys said. I, I really like Eric's comment, and I would like to see reflected in here, who do we want our students to be in our community? How do we want them to give back? And like, where do we see them as part of the greater community? We have so many kids that are educated here and then come back and give back to our community by becoming teachers and firefighters and police officers and things like that. So I think it's a reflection of our community and our standards in our community. What do I, what do we want our kids to, how do we want our kids to reflect that? And then I love Angela's idea of, you know, I think the forefront of, of our job is really to teach kids how to learn and take them on that journey of learning, because everyone has something in the palm of their hand that they can look up any fact that they want, but we want our kids to learn the process of learning, and I'd like to see that reflected here.
Good. Great feedback. You have what you need?
Yeah. Thank you. That was very helpful.
Awesome. All right, we have a one discussion item, and that is the discussion of IASB resolutions and direction for delegate voting. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, I think this was introduced really at your, your last meeting. I think Eric kind of set it up, walking you through. I think this is really just your final opportunity to let him know if you would like to guide him toward voting on any of those in a direction different than I think what the committee piece is. So Eric, I have to do.
Yeah, I mean, as we talked, there's, I mean, there's one resolution in front of us. It is non-controversial. There's a lot of constitutional changes for the IASB. I'd say very routine from my perspective, unless you have a concern, I plan on voting in line with guidance unless something dramatic occurs on the delegate floor.
Board? I agree.
No concerns from mine.
Eric, did anything dramatically change in your discussions when you went through the conference calls?
No, it's very uneventful.
Yeah, that's really strange.
I'm confused as to why there is so little input just from districts around the state. That's the biggest question mark in all of this.
Yeah, that's fair, yeah. John?
Yeah, this is the lightest agenda I think I've seen since the short time I've been here.
All right. So you have the guidance you need, Eric. Great. Thank you. Okay. There are three committee, committee report, board committee reports. Our facilities committee met on October 6th, and the meeting notes were attached. Committee also met on November 10th. The December board packet includes the meeting notes from this date. Mr. Long, any additional comments?
Yes. So the October 6th, I'm not going to speak to. I don't think the minutes for this one are, I think that'll be part of next month. So I'll talk a little bit about some of the topics we covered when we met on Monday. Number one is high school master facility plan that we've talked about. So this is where we're going to be looking at kind of the, the fields and the layouts and potential playing surfaces. So we have a bid from Perkins and Will. We're going to get another bid from Legat, Legat, and then we'll be bringing that forward in, in the early in 2026 for board approval. Middle school, there's not a lot to say. I mean, the bids are issued. The meeting was held with the vendors. There's nine different bid packages. The bids will be opened on December 2nd, and we heard about the, the bond sale that'll happen in early January. Something that's a little, that's newer in terms of specificity is the elementary strategic facility planning tool. And so this is a proposal, just a couple highlights, the last 10 years, you know, the big things from a facility perspective is Jefferson, the Sherman Durgess of investments, and obviously, the middle school projects. Major items in the next 10 years that at least are on the radar right now, high school athletics, you know, that's the field turf, perhaps, perhaps a little more with the press boxes and some of those things. Infrastructure work at the elementary level, that's what, primarily what this elementary strategic financial facility planning tool is about. The last major assessment of elementary schools was really about 20 years ago. So that was relied on when the master plan was done in 2016, I believe, that went to the first referendum. And so this is going to be an effort to, to review all of that and kind of come up with the game plan for the next 10 years. It's also going to give us a tool to better track our assets, which will help the, the team track, have warranty information, serial numbers, all, all that kind of stuff that will help them better manage those investments, so that, that'll be a significant improvement. And, you know, whole goal is to help us develop this, a 10-year plan. So we're just starting that. We're looking at engaging a firm to help with, with that plan, and we don't know if there's anything big there, you know, that, that will be uncovered, but initial feeling is it should, what, what's going to get identified would primarily be part of what Sherman Durgess is. And, and Sherman Durgess itself is something we probably will talk about more, more in finance than facilities in terms of funding levels and so on. So, but I thought it was important to talk a little bit more about that, because that was, that whole, that, that piece was some good information, you know, that I didn't realize 20 years since we really looked at elementary schools. And that's it.
So Dave, it's a proposal to do an assessment or just to look at all elementary schools?
It, to, to do an assessment, and then it actually is a tool that we're purchasing that'll allow us to then track priority need and kind of where each of those assets sits. And I think just one little piece just to, to clarify, as an annual part of what we've done, you've invested heavily in your elementary schools through a lot of the Sherman Durgess work that you've done. And so obviously, something has driven the priorities we've identified, so I don't want to give the impression through, you know, kind of what was shared that, that we haven't been paying any attention to the elementary schools, but really in terms of stepping back and making sure that we have a good 10-year look ahead, we think that's, it's time to, to do that right now. So it's kind of our way as we're, we bring closure to the, to the middle school projects in '27 to really kind of cast what the next kind of 10 years of priority probably need to look like from a facility perspective, which will then hopefully allow the, the board to continue to either fund them in exactly the way that you do or kind of reprioritize the funding elements as well.
I should have one piece of feedback for the facility committee on the, as you're looking at the athletic capabilities, as we have just continued to have growing participation in activities and sports and more approved sports, I know we're kind of thinking that the fields have a lifespan to them, right? They have to be dealt with. Is there any way that we can do things with the other spaces, the other just raw fields out there to enable them?
That's exactly what we're doing. So the, the proposal that we anticipate bringing to you
So the proposal that we anticipate bringing to you would be a proposal to do a master plan for our athletics. So really, to just look at and make sure, not only what needs to be done, but are there some ways we ought to rethink usage? Do we have any underutilized spaces that we ought to consider? So I think before we start investing, I think it is wise to just take a look at where we are and see, you know, if there's some different things that are possible before you start investing.
Perfect, thanks.
And thanks for the clarification on the elementary. I didn't mean to gloss over, so I appreciate you clarifying that. So thank you.
If I could, just add that on the elementary schools, as I understand it, we don't really have a good inventory of heating and ventilating equipment, serial numbers, ages, and so forth. And this will give us a better ability to predict when end of life is coming for some of this equipment.
So when we prepare, or when we do some analysis on the high school and perhaps middle school fields in particular, will there be some research done on injury occurrences in terms of artificial turf versus natural turf? Like in the injuries that we've had on our campuses?
We certainly can. Again, I, we haven't been into that kind of, that level of detail in terms of the planning. I think all we've talked about at the facilities committee is engaging with somebody to help us do the assessment. But that's certainly something we can look at before we bring any kind of proposal to you.
All right. Board Finance Committee met on November 3rd. The meeting notes were attached. Mr. Jerpy, any additional comments?
Yeah, I mean, the bulk of our time was spent on debt issuance and the levy, which obviously we've talked about here. The third topic was really a discussion of cash flow and fund balance policy. So while we have, you know, been fiscally responsive, responsible in passing balanced budgets, because our board established policy sets the target range based on percent of revenue, unless you are continuing to build up those balances, you're going to fall behind from a percent basis. And so as we saw in the trend line, that percentage is coming down gradually. As we look at cash flow, there have been months where we just because of the natural ebb and flow of costs have dipped closer and closer to the floor. And, you know, obviously, there's no issue paying the bills. I mean, push come to shove, tax anticipation warrants and other things allow you to bridge those gaps, but that isn't how we want to operate. And so, you know, I think we were really trying to answer two questions. One is, do we want to look at adjusting our fund balance targets? I would say the topic is still open for discussion, but there's probably not a lot of leeway to adjust our floor. The ceiling maybe warrants some adjustment. The other question was, are we going to need to do something to bolster those fund balances to make sure we're good from a cash flow perspective in the years ahead? And I think as we get into the five-year planning process, we'll get a little bit smarter on that and have some recommendations back to the full board.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. The board's HR Policy Committee met on October 16th. The meeting notes were attached. Ms. Kulevitz, any additional comments?
Yeah, so we talked about two topics. The first was a discussion on flag placement that was mentioned at our last meeting and then also tonight. We started off with just clarification on what our current practices are. And so each classroom does have a district-issued flag that is placed in a district-set location in the classrooms. And we really just spent the time identifying what questions we had, you know, with classrooms that, you know, sometimes don't have a clear front to them, the way, you know, learning is more collaborative, identified some questions about that. Our next meeting is tomorrow. We're reviewing the next issue of press. It is a very lengthy issue, so we're going to do that over the course of two meetings. And I know one of the policies in there enforces something we already have in policy on education, on proper use and display of a flag. So that'll come up again in that conversation with the next press issue. The next topic we discussed at our last meeting was policy eight dash three zero on visitors to and conduct on school property. And we talked about modifying this policy to basically modernize it, of making sure that communication, not just on school property, is appropriate, but also virtually, and how people communicate electronically through email with staff and with others. So that was the basic summary. Anything else to add or questions?
Sorry, can you clarify that second point about the off-campus communication a bit?
So we have a policy on conduct expectations for visitors on school property, and we discussed modernizing that to also have expectations on visitors' communications virtually with the school as well.
Any other questions, Board? All right. Any other reports from board members tonight? That's your cue.
I've had the pleasure of visiting two of my adopted schools, North and Hubble, and also went over to Lowell to help with the kids getting ready for their circus next week. And I did get an interesting piece of feedback, admiration for our cell phone policy and not a single complaint, at least at that school, relative to what we've put in. So I feel good about, it was a long time getting there, but it seems to have worked well.
Thank you for the feedback. Anyone else?
Just two quick things. Several of us attended the DePage Board, or DePage Division meeting a couple weeks ago, was on the Art of School boarding. And the main reason I bring it up, there was a book available for each district, which I have. When I finish reading it, I'll either pass it along or give it to Diana if anybody else is interested. Secondly, I asked a question last month when the ambassadors talked about DECA, and this week I got an opportunity through work to volunteer to judge one of those events. So I'm going to take advantage of that because I actually understood a little bit of what it meant because of my volunteering.
Congratulations to the ambassadors for bringing that up.
So thanks for learning me.
Nice. Nice. Anyone else? All right, we have four written reports tonight. They're in the, attached to the agenda. The monthly financial reports, the November Freedom of Information Act report, board communication log, and the Citizens Advisory Committee report. We have three topics for future discussion, the 2025 tax levy approval, the fiscal year '25 audit, and the '27-'28 school calendar. Board, are there any additional topics members want considered for future discussion? All right. So I have a point on the calendar. It always seems like at our coffee, someone comes and says, I didn't know about the calendar. And I don't know how we can possibly communicate anymore about that, but as we, as we get into that topic, communication about how people can influence or impact or provide feedback to the calendar earlier. I know we've really tried. I'm not quite sure what else to do, but just a thought.
And you can do anything with a calendar, but you can't do everything.
That's exactly right. That is a great quote. We should get T-shirts.
And also recommend that we get some feedback on how it went this year because I've received quite a bit of feedback from parents and staff about their impressions of how it has been going. So it'd be great to get some of that feedback.
Our next regular meeting, board meeting, is going to be December 10th at 7:00 PM at Bauer Elementary School. The next coffee with the board will be on Saturday, December 6th at 9:00 AM at the School Service Center. We will be moving to a closed session tonight. So Board, I need a motion and a second to adjourn to closed session pursuant to the Illinois Open Meetings Act exemption five ILCS 120 slash two, Part C, Part One.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Rutledge?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kulevitz. Ms. Hutchison, please call the roll.
Ms. Rutledge?
Yes.
Ms. Kulevitz?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Edison?
Yes.
Ms. Bladner?
Yes.
Mr. Jerpy?
Yes.
Yes. The meeting's adjourned to closed session, but action is not expected following the closed session. Thank you and good night.
Okay.